Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Solti?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Youth representative?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Here.
Counselor Stenit?
Here.
Counselor Urban?
Here.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Mayor Gallin?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, there's no items to be added to the agenda. Brings us to appearances of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens to comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council discussion on that item. Council will not engage in any discussion or make any decision based on public comments at this time. However, council may take comments under advisement for discussion and action at a further council meeting. The first one I have is Ed- Edward Remfo.
My name is Edward Remfo. I have kids that go to school here in town and they'll all live here on the down rise a little. One, I want to remind folks, you folks went ahead and passed on helping with the clinic that's supposed to go into Lane Community College. You folks might take that into center of mind, but if a child gets the wrong kind of medication and ends up with allergic reaction or something, they could possibly come back after you folks. That's just the only thing I want to say there. Two, the gentleman that was attacked, and I'm going to say this, attacked by your officers here this last month. I know him personally. I know he's not the greatest kid in the world, but what I have on tape and what I have seen from your officers is uncalled for and shit not. He looked at, liked him. He put his hands behind his head, his hands were put behind his back, and then he was slammed to the ground and punched multiple times, knocking two of his teeth out, causing a head injury and multiple stitches. Now, for you that don't know, I'm running for Oregon House Representatives District Two, so I do know the laws of the state of Oregon. What your officers did is blatant assault. And trust me, it's being looked at by more than just me. The tapes are being reviewed over and over and over again, zoomed in and everything else. I have made sure what I've watched, I've watched multiple times. I don't agree with what Alex Harrelson has done in the past and his behaviors in the past. I will tell you that personally. And I am his uncle, and I didn't care for what the kid did. But what I saw on tape that day, he put his hands behind his head, walked up to the street, they put his hands behind his back, and then slammed him to the ground and continued to punch him. Why haven't your officers been used, been taught the use of tasers? Why haven't your officers been taught the use of mace? What happened that day should have never happened. And now it's out there on video where his mom, his sisters, his uncles, his grandparents, his aunts, we live it over and over and over again. I've never agreed with what my nephews have done in the past. But with what I saw on those tapes, and I have zoomed it in to watch what happened. Somebody says now they're saying he reached for a gun. How did he reach for a gun when an officer had both his hands behind his back? And he walked out to that street. And all the video evidence, all of it, from the time he put his jacket on and everything else, there was never a gun on that gentleman. Never. For that to be said is horse crap. And I'm trying to be nice tonight. Because when did Cottage Grove change so much that their gun beat an innocent person? He tried to cooperate with them and he got what? Runway sideways, thrown to the ground and beaten. What if that was your nephew, or your nephew, or your brother? I don't care. Yes, Alex has had problems in the past, but that day was he causing anybody any harm? Did he not try to cooperate with those officers? Have any of you seen the videotape? Have you? Have you?
We're not going to engage with you on this.
No, they will be on not professional. If you're not going to engage with your public people, maybe you shouldn't be where you're at.
Johanna Zee?
Little lighter things to talk about, I'm so sorry. Johanna Zee, 1386 Occam Road. Thanks. So I do want to talk about the affordable housing that you guys just had your work session on. I appreciated Counselor Roberts' comments about that and the thoughtfulness of other ones, people speaking up and taking the time. I do want to clarify, Eric had said that no comments about this until after the draft is done. We are always allowed to comment, you know, off the agenda. So we don't want to have the same thing happen that we happened, you know, with the homeless side, is that the plan is completely done and then people, you know, see it and then comment on it. So I think people need to be a part of the process and really hear and comment as it goes along. So I just want to share that affordable housing is not going to address the homeless issue at all, because the homeless issue is not a housing issue. It is a fallacy and a long tried method to address the issue of people living on the streets. So a lot of excuses abound about why these methods have not worked, but they don't. And so that's the, of course, the definition of insanity, to expect that by creating the affordable housing, it's going to address the homeless issue. That's a separate issue in and of itself. So just some questions on this, and I know you can't engage, your three years of studies and then a couple of years of building. My question is how much have the consultations and presentations and paperwork and all that actually cost the city? We've seen various projections about population and things that never really came to fruition, they're not really accurate. So these are just, this is a lot of administrative stuff here that we spend time and money in, and we're actually blind to what is happening around us. Community Strong did bring forth some ideas about the low income housing. I don't know a lot about the contractors in that, but I do know, you know, a fair amount about eco-friendly housing, whether it's hempcrete or cob houses or, you know, we have the opportunity to do something very unique, but we need to look in front of us. Oftentimes, we're just looking at what, you know, we're being told to do by some outside organization and just kind of following that. So I'm a little concerned that, you know, we're listening to these organizations like Leave Oregon Cities, or OHA, or CDC, or the corporate known media for direction in truth, and we ignore, again, what's right in front of us. We ignore our own personal experiences, our discernment and our common sense. So I really question the leadership in this community. I feel like you're hanging on the coattails of your city manager, waiting for your next move. This is not meant to be disparaging, as when you're permitted to behave in a certain way for so long, it just gets very familiar and hard to step outside that program, you know, that patterning. I'm just inviting you guys to really step up, look what's in front of you and say, hey, what's going on? Put all those other organizations and rules and all those administrative mandates aside and say what's important to us here, and get out and talk to people more. So I was surprised, but not surprised, that this is coming up right now. I thought, well, maybe this is to distract us from the low barrier site, maybe to push this through before elections, I don't know. But this feels, again, that the public is just being informed on issues rather than being a part of the discussion. We didn't get a real town hall, we know that. The closest we're getting is the Beeper Show and maybe Community Strong's meetings where we can sit and share real ideas and solutions for our community. So I'm concerned also that when you put a large number of low income housing in a very small space together, you're putting people who are facing serious life challenges and they're very, you know, destitute situations, and it's not going to help to uplift them. We're separating them from the rest of the community instead of embracing those who need the support. So I'm not against housing, we obviously need housing, we obviously need to address what's going on in our community, but I do question how much time and energy is spent on these administrative studies and years of doing this. Again, and I invite you to kind of think outside the box, you know, we're all looking at environmental issues these days and we have an opportunity to do that. So I think that, you know, we can set those other things aside and not be so fixated on what are we being told to do by these other organizations, but let's get together and look at what's happening in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Venice Mason?
My name is Venice. Can you hear me with the mask on? Am I clear? Okay, great. My name is Venice Mason, and I live in the old city hall building downtown Cottage Grove. I have provided two images to you, you all have them in front of you. One is of Mr. Harrelson's face after he had received what was an unconscionable beating in an out of control scene in front of multiple witnesses in the community. The other picture, and this picture's been used in the media frequently and was actually, has been requested by the FBI, who I was interviewed by Friday before last in the book mine regarding this incident. So if we think that the world isn't kind of looking at what we're doing here, we have definitely come to the attention of the federal authorities. I didn't provide them with the originals because I'm retaining an attorney to help me deal with the impacts of having witnessed this beating. Officer Dunlap was completely out of control of that scene. He put elders at risk, he put community members at risk, he put himself at risk. Off-duty police officer had to come in and help him finish a start, a fight that he started that he could not finish at all. That scene was out of control. I draw your attention to the second picture, which has not been used in the media. This is a picture of what was left of Alex Harrelson on the sidewalk when they were done beating him. The white spots are his teeth. No one has used it because it is too traumatizing. I'm diagnosed with PTSD. I'm in treatment for what I witnessed that day. What happened was unconscionable. Having him reviewed by an officer who is serving as our captain is insufficient. There's a conflict of interest with him doing the investigation. We need an independent review. People are asking a lot of questions about what happened that day, and what I witnessed was four police officers and one off-duty police officer repeatedly punching, hitting, and beating his head into the sidewalk in front of everybody on the street, on camera, in front of multiple witnesses. There was elders there, there were children walking by, there was all kinds of things that could have went a lot more wrong with that day, and we're all pretty lucky, actually. And just like the gentleman who's a relative of Alex Harrelson, I do not condone his former behavior. I do not think that him swinging a sword around was easy. But what has happened in the last few weeks in this community is absolutely unconscionable. Since then, there has been continued harassment at the homeless camp. I've witnessed it, I've filmed it, you want to see it, I have an archive of it. It's called Being an Informed Citizen. It started with Rodney King, and that's when we all saw what happens when people have unchecked authority without being held accountable by their communities. It is very simple to do these things. We need to have mental health crisis teams that are available in our community, the funding is available, and Cottage Grove has grown up enough to meet it. With the methamphetamine problem, the mental health problem, and violence happening in all of our communities, with poverty striking everybody, and with tensions high in this community, there is no reason not to utilize available funding to create mental health crisis services with urgency in our community. We need to have impartial review from an outside agency. Let's not let that agency be the FBI. Can we do something else except wait for the feds to come investigate our city? Can we have an open conversation in a town hall meeting about violence in our community? And there have been further arrests, further harassment by Officer Dunlap at the homeless camp. Jonathan Turner was cited and had to be taken to the hospital suicidal after an interaction that was completely unfair with Officer Dunlap. So it's my suggestion that someone get a ring name on him at some point. The tensions in our city are high. We are doing our best to address the needs of our homeless community, we're doing the best to address our needs for safety. I myself personally have experienced police brutality. I also have family who are police officers, and I've also been in situations where the police have saved my life. Everybody here is human. This isn't just about individuals, this is about inherently oppressive power systems and what happens when people are given authority without accountability. Any one of us has no idea what we would do in that situation. I'm grateful that nobody died, and I'm grateful that it was somebody who isn't capable of standing up for himself, or else he all wouldn't even be here. Thank you for letting me speak.
Barbara Shae?
Hi, I'm Barbara Shaff, and this is my first time, and what I'm finding out is there's not going to be a discussion between people, it's just my thinking, well, I want to know what's going on with this tent city and how long it's going to go on. I want people to address this thing in our beautiful little town that smack dab in the 99 and May, and it's growing, and it's growing. And I know that there has to be sanitation problems, I know that there's laws that they're breaking, that they're not going by. Move them out, send them home, send them on down the road, I don't care where they go, I just don't want them in my town. I'm sorry, but I pay big taxes, and I don't want, I don't pay them for them to sit there and do the drugs and partying all night and sleep all day. That's not what my taxes go for, and I've paid a lot of money for a lot of years in taxes. And there are, there are rules to even owning your own property that you cannot do on your own property. Why, are there rules for those people? Is there a thing that can say, you might, you can stay here three days and then you're gone, but you know that all the skate parks and, and the lakes and stuff, they can't be there because there's rules, there's laws. And one of them is rivers. They cannot be by, I know this one's for bad. You cannot flood a river, you cannot be a certain amount of feet away from a river. For one thing, sanitation, what are they doing for sanitation there? And what are they doing with children and dogs? When I was younger, if you, if you didn't have sanitation, they came and took your kids away from you and kicked you out. There's nothing wrong with that. There's supposed to be sanitation, and I don't know why it's okay now to not have bathrooms, not have running water, not having facilities other than all free. If it's free, then it's fine for them, but if it's something they have to be responsible for. And I had a brother that was in the same situation, and I'll tell you what it boils down to, kids. They don't, they like that lifestyle, they don't want to change it. Put them in a little house, you're going to find out, they're going to stay out there because they wanted you there drinking and partying at night and sleeping in the day because they don't want any responsibilities. And I know that for a fact, it's been in my family. And I'm tired of, and I'm tired of working all these years, and I get a piece of little amount of money for my social security, and they get money for doing nothing and drugging and drinking and partying and whatever. It's not right. It's just, there's got to be something done, and you don't put, allow it in the middle, the smack dab middle of our little town is almost room that I can handle. It's every day I go by there and there's more added. And some of those tents are as big as a small house or a trailer, but you know, they're not planning on staying a day or two, they're putting up their residence, and I don't want to pay for them. I don't, I don't want to pay my taxes to the city of Cottage Grove and pay for them. I don't want it. And I think there's a lot of people that do the same way I do. We don't know what to do about it because you can't come and say anything, you tell me anything, you understand you're baffling because nobody can give me any advice or tell me anything. But I do know there's laws on sanitation and laws on different things on properties that I have to abide by. They are more by law. Why? Why? Do they not have to abide by? Send them on down the road. We don't need them here. Thank you.
Mary and Jim Hauser?
I just want to say something about the guy that got beat up. I think the cops were in a tough situation there, and this guy, I've seen him a year ago swinging a sword around, and I thought it was really bizarre that he was still out a year later doing the same thing. And he's schizophrenic, and you can look at that video all you want, some people say it was wrong, others will say it wasn't wrong, but the thing is, when someone tenses up and they're schizophrenic, you can't see that on video. So I've watched your cops in action against druggies in our neighborhood with cocaine-induced paranoia, and they, they're really good. They sit there in the defensive situation and take these guys, you know, out, or usually they'll let them walk and not even arrest them. So I've seen him do really good work. So I don't want you to sit there and railroad your cops in order to, you know, basically ease or, you know, make yourself feel better against people that are reacting to a video. So try and, try and be objective on this. The bottom line, the reason they're having to deal with these situations, is nobody's dealing with mental health issues in this town. You've got a recovery center downtown, they don't have the services when people want to get recovery and they got, you know, mental problems because of drugs, and then you've also got Southland Mental Health. There's no reason we should have problems with mental health in this town, which we've got Southland Mental Health, it's obviously not working. And the other thing I want to say to, to all you guys that have been voting in this homeless camp, this is why people are moving into a town. You guys are a little bit blind. They're, they're lining up, it's a waiting period over there by the tail head, and they're just sitting there waiting to get into the free housing. So low barrier shelter, they're going to be partying over there, and I'm going to have to hold you guys accountable. It's not, you know, it sounds good, you feel good, you feel good, you feel good. You know, there's only a couple people here that are actually behaving, you know, fiscally responsibly for our taxpayers. I feel sorry for the lady that talked, she's been here a whole lot, she's on social security, she can't enjoy her parks. I mean, these are people that built this town, we built this town, and you let these people come in and destroy the atmosphere of it. And it's because of what you guys are doing. So I need you guys to sit there and think twice about what you're doing, because it's going to, I'm going to get active and I'm going to start, you know, making sure the right people are voted for in November. Thank you.
Bruce Kelch?
Bruce Kelch, 78340 Holderman Road in Cottage Grove. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I want to address the September 1st police incident with Alexander Harrelson. Friends of mine were eyewitnesses to what happened, and they have shared with me what they saw. And like so many others, I've watched the video, read the news articles, and watched local news reports. I, I was shocked and appalled by what I saw. Quite rightly, there is an investigation going on, and due process is certainly one of the fundamentals of our legal system. I trust the investigation will be comprehensive and thorough, and all parties can feel that justice was served. The police department's public statement says it will use this incident to review its tactics, policies, and training, and will strive to improve when necessary and possible. I appreciate that even challenging situations like this one can be an opportunity to learn and improve. I advocate and support the following, amongst other ideas that are going to be presented. Body cameras. I believe there's significant support in our community for officers to wear and use body cameras. They protect officers from false claims and provide an objective record of what has happened. Review the policy on use of force and provide training and de-escalation techniques. Work with the county to create a cahoots, hybrid, or other model that fits our community, and I understand there are county funds available for that. And council members may find my elastic suggestion surprising. Review police salaries and compensation. In a conversation I had with Chief Shepherd last year, he shared the Cottage Grove Police Department regularly loses officers to Springfield, which pays more. Jim Collins, the author of the well-known book Good to Great, says an organization's success begins with having the right people on the bus, and the city should ask itself how it can attract, train, and retain the right people. Another area of concern that was raised in this incident is municipal court, which I understand is under the purvey of the city council. Alexander Harrelson was appointed an attorney who is paid by the city, if I'm correct. His attorney was not a Lane County public defender, and Alex's city-paid attorney persuaded him to plead guilty. It strikes me that there could have been a motivation on the part of the attorney to close this case quickly with a guilty plea. And the question I have is how can justice be served when the attorney's employer, the city, could be a future defendant? So the optics on that are interesting and worth investigating, I think. I hope that out of this very unfortunate situation, some good and some reforms and some changes can result. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Mary Day?
Dana Mary Day, 205 Adams Avenue. Currently, there are Cottage Grove community members standing on the picket lines 24/7 without pay, they've been there for over two weeks. These are our fellow citizens, and they are standing up to a corporation who's made record profits, two and a half billion this year. They're paying high dividends to their shareholders, their CEO makes over $12 million, and all they're asking for is fair health benefits and wages that at least match inflation levels. I would like to urge the council to offer a letter of support, and if you can't, as a body, consider that as an individual council member. Offer communities, the community of the Warehouser employees who spend their money when they're earning it here in the community, or a vibrant part of our community. Gone are the days when W.A. Woodard formed his lumber operations that he sold to Warehouser. In his day, he paid the highest wages in town, he ensured that his workers had a decent place to live. He fought for healthcare, helping form the hospital because he knew that woodwork was a dangerous occupation, and you might not survive a trip from the woods all the way to Eugene. So he helped form the community hospital here in town. Once he sold it, the corporation doesn't have that same commitment to the community. Their only focus on profits, and they are siphoning the labor from the community, the timber from the hills that surround it, and they are answerable to no one here. So if you can, I would urge the council or individually to offer support for our workers and address that concern to the corporation. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Kanino? Allison, are you online? Hit star six if you're on a phone or something. Okay, we'll move on then. I'm going to read a prepared statement. "We appreciate the comments regarding recent incident with police department. We as a city council cannot take any action regarding this incident. It's administrative function of the city manager. The city manager has taken steps to ensure the incident is fully investigated. There are two separate investigations proceeding, and we will not judge or interfere in those investigations. Doing so could be subject to the city to significant costs and jeopardize the further actions of any necessary after the conclusion of the investigation. The city's investigation is being conducted by an experienced investigator from outside agency and is being overseen by the experienced interim chief, who is also from an outside agency. The city is in full cooperation with the FBI in the investigation as well. There have been too many examples in this country over the last couple of years where media, elected officials, and others have jumped to conclusion without complete information. Those examples resulted in costly litigation, overturned actions, and unnecessarily delays and damages to those involved. As an employee of a member of a labor union, I completely understand the need to make sure that all information is correct prior to taking any action." It brings us to item five, public hearings. There is no public hearing, so item six, consent agenda?
Move approval?
Second. Motion with a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Resolution and ordinance, item seven, A is second vote for ordinance number three one six three, amending title five. Ms. Lickens.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. At the previous city council meeting, the city council held the first vote on ordinance number thirty one sixty three, amending title five, business licenses and regulations, chapter five point three two, transient room tax. Effective October one, which is the Saturday, the city of Eugene has opted to use the Oregon Department of Revenue to collect the transient lodging taxes for them and will no longer contract with various agencies, including the city of Cottage Grove, to provide those collection services. Ordinance number thirty one sixty three will align the city's existing room tax procedures with administrative requirements of the Oregon Department of Revenue, allowing them to collect the transient lodging taxes for the city once an intergovernmental agreement is made for the collection of those taxes. The agreement cannot be finalized until after the ordinance is adopted. The model intergovernmental agreement is attached and has been available for your review. The cost of the collection service is estimated to be approximately $197 per month, which is less than what the city could do it for ourselves. The collection will happen in the months of April, July, October and January of each year. Previously, they were being collected and paid to the city on a monthly basis. So this may affect how the Chamber of Commerce receives their, their funding as one percent of the taxes collected goes to them. It is important to note that the proposed amendments do not create a new tax or change the city's existing room tax rate applicable to the transient rentals within the city of Cottage Grove. The term transient room tax is being updated to transient lodging tax as used in O R S three two zero. The term, or, excuse me, the ordinance repeals title five, chapter five point three two and replaces the in poll attached to the ordinance as exhibit A. It's the recommendation that the city council hold the second vote on ordinance number thirty one sixty three, amending title five, business license and regulations, chapter five point three two, transient room tax, and authorize the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon Department of Revenue for collection of the transient lodging taxes beginning October one, twenty twenty two. Any questions?
Counsel Urban. I would move that ordinance number thirty one sixty three, amending title five, business license and regulations, chapter five point three two, transient room tax, and authorize the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon Department of Revenue for collection of transient lodging taxes beginning October first, twenty twenty two. Second. A motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Signal recorder, please call the roll.
House Solsky?
Aye.
House Savage?
Aye.
U.S. Representative?
Aye.
House Fleck?
Aye.
Counsel Senate?
Aye.
Counsel Urban?
Aye.
Counsel Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Gowney?
Aye.
So item, or ordinance three one six three is adopted. Brings us to item B, second vote for ordinance number three one six four, amending title ten, vehicles and traffic. Mr. Myers.
At the, at the previous city council meeting, the council held the first vote on ordinance number thirty one sixty four that established regulations associated with camping inside a vehicle and, or camping within the right of way within a community. Basically, the regulations that are proposed by this ordinance are for the safety of all users of the right of way, for those pedestrians, bicycles, vehicles that are using it, as well as the others that would be camping on it. Currently, we have no regulations associated with prohibiting camping in a vehicle on the right of way. In addition to that, Martin Boise would, if we had something, would be requiring us to remove that ordinance from our code. The regulations that would be required and established as a part of this would be that a vehicle has to be parked in compliance with all established parking regulations. It can't be parked within a hundred feet of a private or public school and established licensed daycare or a public playground. The vehicle is operational and can legally operate on the street and no materials, items, supplies, waste are on the street, sidewalk, bike lane or planting strip. The plant, the, the ordinance also goes on to regulate the right of way by saying that no non-vehicle items, tent or other non-vehicle items used in the right of way. And the right of way would include the bike lanes, sidewalk and planting strip, that area between the curb and sidewalk. And so it's now do it for a second vote on ordinance number thirty one sixty four.
Counsel Fleck.
Mr. Mayor, move that the council adopt resolution thirty one sixty four.
Ordinance.
Sorry, ordinance.
Do we have discussion?
Do we go a second? We'll have a discussion after. One second. Okay. Some motion with a second. Counsel Solsky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I stated before, I feel like this is a vehicle regulation that was on the books. We didn't have any, anything on the books about camping in residential neighborhoods on public streets. And it was always a 72-hour, you can park a vehicle. I've been told all along that if we do this homeless camp, that we don't have to allow people to camp in our parks. And this is another concern of mine. I, I feel like instead of saying that now it's a, a parking camping regulation. And I think we're going the opposite direction, even though we're putting in homeless shelter now. And it actually says homeless population continues, whereas the homeless population continues to increase. And then the council authorized a homeless shelter. That, whereas the council established overnight camping program on private and commercial land to aid with the issue. So it's my opinion that we are stepping up, doing a lot more right now, but now we're wanting to change this. So it's not just leaving your car for 72 hours. Now it's regulating camping. And so I do have a problem with this. I, I cannot vote for this. I think this needs to come back to the council, in my opinion, and it should be. We wouldn't be in violation of Martin versus Boise because we're putting in a homeless shelter. We're already doing things that I was told would remedy this. And this feels like a step in the backwards direction to me. I think this should be brought back to council and fixed so that, I mean, right in there, it's like some of the, you know, not within a hundred feet of a school or a daycare. And why is that? But you can, because obviously there's a worry about someone that you don't know camping next to a school or a daycare when you don't know who this person is. Do, as citizens, when you have small children and you'll have someone possibly camped in front of your home, it's a concern to me that, you know, you don't know who they are or your kid's going to be able to play outside. And I, I've seen other cities where this has become a problem where it'll be, yeah, it's only three days, but then they can move around the block and then they can come right back. And so I just think it's something we're changing. And I know they're saying it's to tighten it up, but I think we need to be tighter than this.
Counsel Urban. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate those concerns, definitely. The tack I'm on is based on an understanding that currently camping in vehicles in the public right of way is permissible right now, a hundred percent permissible. So if that's not the case, or if there's some nuance to that, I would seek someone who is aware of that to chime in before I continue.
Yes, they are 100% allowed right now. It is permissible to park in the right of way in a vehicle and camp in your vehicles in Cottage Grove. We do have the 72-hour requirement. That requirement stays in place with this ordinance. That's parking regulations. And then we add these additional parameters. So I would offer a friendly amendment to the motion, making the vehicle parking within a thousand feet of public or private school, established licensed daycare, public playground, and change the reference to camping in right of way to camping in public right of way. The definition of right of way is the public right of way. That's, that would be redundant. I, I don't see a need there, but that could happen and it doesn't matter. It's still the same thing. We're regulating our right of way in the provision of the ordinance. Thousand feet, I think you'd be a little tough to be able to describe a thousand-foot impact. A thousand, a hundred feet, we're saying we're, we're out of the way of the parking, we're out of the way of the drop-off zones, we're out of the way of the extra traffic that occurs as a result of schools or daycares or, or those locations. You go a thousand feet, you're going a thousand feet from the borders, the property lines of those pieces of property. And you're overlapping over a considerable sizable portion of our community that way, much into the same area that we would be getting with some of the other regulations that we aren't allowed to do in land use laws.
Counsel Roberts.
Richard, didn't we put a thousand feet distance on marijuana businesses and manufacturers to schools?
Is it a thousand or five hundred, Eric?
It's a thousand feet, but it's not in our ordinance. It's.
It's state law.
Yeah.
Counsel Urban, so I wanted to follow up on the public rights of way. So in section of our code twelve point zero three point zero two zero, public rights of way is defined. And public rights of way include, but are not limited to, streets, roads, highways, bridges, alleys, sidewalks, trails, paths. So we can see there's some redundancy in the language there. Public easements and all other public ways or areas, including subservices under the airspace over these areas. And that's referencing an ordinance from ninety six. In the last council meeting, I asked about the paths and the bike pads and the different trails along. And I, I would open it to you to reiterate how you responded to that, Mr. Myers.
Yeah, those are all right. The, the public right of way is any of those pieces of property. Now, we have some properties that we use as paths and stuff, but they are fee simple property, title-owned property, and those don't necessarily fit into the public right of way rules unless we designated them a right of way. But yeah, our, our bike path, our others like that are right of way and, and delineated that way. So I, you know, under state law, we're looking at the right of way definition there. I don't know if the state, I don't think the state law, public in front of the right of way provisions. We can put it on. I mean, there's not a problem there. Just sometimes it may be redundant. It might be helpful to be that redundant.
More specific question is a definition of the public areas. Because in just a, a layman's reading of that, I would think that a park, a designated park is a public area.
Yeah, but it's a, it's not a right of way. It is a park. It is land that is designated separately and not classified as the public right of way. When they're talking public ways or areas, they're, they're specifically tying it into things that are meant for the, the thoroughfare of traffic.
Ms. Conley wants to chime in, Mr. Myers.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Conley.
Thanks. I just, it, it's actually making me nervous to try to correlate the two different sections of the city code between title ten and then title twelve, which accomplish two different things. So were the councils who want to entertain this type of change, I would want to look at it really carefully to make sure we're not having unintended consequences. And my other concern is that by, so, so leaving it as rights of way makes it really clear that is all city streets, any dedicated right of way that is within the city jurisdiction to extend it to the public rights of way as defined in title twelve. Because of that reference to public places that Counselor Urban was just pointing to, we may be having again, an unintended impact of, instead of trying to comply with Martin v. Boise and HB thirty one fifteen, we might instead be drawing a challenge of adopting an ordinance that would be unreasonable from the perspective of a homeless individual. So what we're wanting to do is kind of add this area to our, to the city's, sorry, not our, but to the city's inventory of locations where individuals can sleep, lie, rest, et cetera, while instituting really defensible parameters, like City Manager Myers was pointing out around schools to not interfere with the parking and the, you know, drop-offs and pickups, et cetera. That's a really defensible time, place and manner restriction. So I'm, I'm sorry, I just, it's just a lot to, it's more than you might think to make this very, very, what looks to be a minor change.
Yeah, I guess I would say it's kind of exactly what I thought it was. I was told that this was the same thing at the outset of this conversation. And when I pushed on it to call out specifically why I was doing that, now it's a problem. So why don't, and I don't, I will push back that it is not clear, especially now, what right of way means because it's now undefined. I looked in the code for right of way, it was defined specifically as private or a public right of way. But now this use of right of way in section ten is undefined, except for including bike lanes, sidewalks and planting strips. So are we saying that that is the definition now of right of way, which is distinct from public right of way?
Well, the intent is to just make a very, very minor tweak because your traffic ordinance relies on state law. And so I can't, the Oregon vehicle code, I'm unable this quickly to determine exactly what that is under state law.
In, in title, in title ten, in, in chapter ten point oh four oh, oh four, in the definitions, we have street. And it says, street means highway, road, street or alley as defined in O R S. And then it gives the, the different sites in the Oregon vehicle code, including the entire width of the right of way. And so we could change the way to be street and that would probably be more consistent with this definition. But the, with all those O R Ss and see what it says on the right of way.
So right of way is defined in eight oh one point four four oh, which is.
And that's right of way for a vehicle, not for the right of way. But yeah.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to find cross-referenced definitions to, to try to address the concern that it is an undefined term. So that statute states right of way means the right of one vehicle or pedestrian to proceed in a lawful manner in preference to another vehicle or pedestrian approaching under similar, such circumstances of direction, speed. So that one's not applicable here.
Yeah.
But again, that's why I can't, we, I don't want to analyze on the spot what changes to an ordinance that's going to become part of your code. Do we want to make on the spot?
So I, that's, my, my caution is that there are so many nuanced things going on here and it's all left to interpretation of the force of the will of those implementing. And, you know, some of this council and some of the residents are representing a position which is, we do want the parks and their original intended function to be preserved. And there's this kind of, in my opinion, a nebulous definition of, you might agree, of totality of the circumstances surrounding, which we don't have defined. And we now have a shelter. We have a community group that's also willing to, to help in some ways. We're going to be entertaining an R F P or proposals elicited by the R F P. We're going to be entertaining an RFP or proposals elicited by the RFP. And I think a lot of us want to know, when do we get, what is the outlook here? I would like to see some, some steps taken to preserve the use of the parks. And when I read this, I can think in my mind, oh, well, this is what this is going to do. Turns out, nope, it isn't what it's going to do. And I know we talked about, because apparently this definition doesn't apply, because if it did, which is why you're cautious right now, Mrs. Conley, because now it interferes with, now it actually does mean that you can't have a tent set up in a park, if it actually meant "public" right-of-way. So there's, I guess I want to just express that I want some more clarity on these things. All of these words apparently matter very much. And I think we should define all the terms and have that at our disposal before making decisions.
Counsel Savage.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Two different thoughts in this conversation that Counsel Urban is bringing on. It made me realize, is there a difference between a bike path and a bike lane? And I don't know the answer to that, except one is on the street, but another one is a form of transportation that we have been very cognizant about creating crossways on major thoroughfares, such as on Gateway, we have the signals. And then on Rauck River, we have more signals for pedestrians. So that thought crossed my mind. The other thought that I had in, and I'll, I want to throw out two different scenarios, and I don't know if this changes anything, but under the current code right now, if somebody was in their vehicle, in their RV, that legally drives and legally meets all the parameters, they haven't been there for three days, and they up and leave, and it's, it's now abandoned on city property, who's responsible for cleaning that up under the code now? And then the same question applies to, if this were to pass, does that change? I don't know the answer to that, but I'm curious.
We are responsible to remove abandoned vehicles off our streets. That's part of our enforcement. If we have a vehicle that doesn't move, we'll tag it and go through that process. And if they don't remove it, then we get to tow it. And under the regulations or the notices that we've received from the towing companies, they will no longer tow RVs because of the excessive cost associated with removing them and going through the process of getting title and then decommissioning and cleaning them up and the storage space they require. They won't do that. So we'll have to have them towed to our own property, have a hazardous materials company come in after we've got entitled, to come in, assess whether there's any hazards there, clean up anything that needs to be removed, and then we can have them demolished and pay for somebody to demolish them. Much the same as a regular vehicle, but a regular vehicle is not the extent of an RV. We currently, we have spent, the last one that we had to do, hit about $2,800, I believe, to have it taken care of. That is a problem that's hitting communities all over the country, where people are abandoning RVs that are now not worth anything in actual cost to get rid of, and they're parking them on streets. Over the last ten years, ten years ago, people were doing it with boats, and we didn't see RVs as much, but it's kind of changed now, and we're starting to see RVs. And people would abandon a, a large boat on public land and/or in private parking lots. The transom would rot, and the boat is now worth nothing, and disposal costs more to get rid of it than they want to do, and they'll just abandon them. People do it with cars, but their, cars are a little easier to take care of and handle.
So just to clarify, it's the same scenario regardless?
Yep.
Cities on the hook. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'd like to circle back to what Counselor Solsky first said, your first comment. I understand completely that it feels like it's going in the wrong direction, but I would like you to consider specifically youth who don't fit into HUD's Category 1 definition of homelessness, which means that they don't, they haven't been on the streets for long enough, or if you are at risk of homelessness or if you're cop-surfing, you don't fit into HUD's Definition 1. And a lot of homeless service, homelessness services for youth that are in the Lane County area do not serve any youth who do not fit into that Category 1, which is a really hard requirement to reach. And so for a lot of those kids, they don't have a lot of options. And one of the options that they do have is maybe they do have a vehicle, or maybe they have a friend's vehicle that they are able to stay in. And so just, I think that that is an option that we shouldn't completely take away from them.
I understand where you're coming from. I'm looking at this, the big picture right now. Every action that we're taking has a reaction. And as a youth, I can tell you, we have a community here that would rally around you. And if you needed a driveway to park in or a piece of land, and that's why we just passed a new ordinance that says that the homeowner can let you camp, even in their backyard. They can let you camp in the driveway. And especially being a resident of Cottage Grove, I do not believe that any youth would have a hard time finding someone that would give them a piece of property for a little while. And as, I would like to now circle back to, I, I get told that I ask too many questions and that I should trust what the city manager says. I should trust the attorney. And this is really frustrating to me because, you know, I was hearing the city manager say that what Counselor Urban was talking about in his language was redundant. And, you know, if we were just to trust and pass something, you know, we have to ask these questions. It's really important. Everything that we're doing right now is, our citizens are at stake, and I mean everyone. I'm not, we're, we're doing things for the homeless situation, obviously. And like I said, that last ordinance that we passed on, you know, somebody can give you permission. And what I want to protect is, and I had actually talked to Taylor's Towing, and they did tell me that it was costing about $3,000 per vehicle to get rid of. And circling back to Counselor Savage's question, if a mess was left behind, who would be responsible to clean it? And you're talking in front of your homes now. So, you know, all these things, we do have to take into account and take it very seriously. And I want to thank you for doing your best, Counsel Urban.
Counsel Fleck.
So I guess the one point, and Carrie can, or Ms. Conley can, you know, verify, but, you know, if this did go to the court, the court is going to look at what was the legislative intent. I know that I've seen this in bills from the legislature. You know, that being said, I am totally fine putting this off to a future meeting. And I guess so, for point of order, if I withdrew my motion and the second withdrew theirs, could we bring this back at the next meeting? Okay, so I withdraw my motion.
Counsel Roberts, you withdraw your second.
I'm having a problem with this hundred-feet of school. That's not much space.
So do you want to withdraw your second, and we'll put it off till the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll revisit that.
So, does that mean that staff is going to relook at this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Conley.
Counsel Stan.
Can I ask a question, please? I just want to understand your concern. Can we just still dance? So you're concerned that the right-of-way may, may be interpreted as a park, as a little bit of park? Or else it might be interpreted as the public right-of-way?
I was kind of hoping that it would. Now I'm concerned that it won't.
Okay. It's going to seem to be the right-of-way, the first to travel.
Yeah, so a lesson from a longtime Portland friend about moving quickly across land as you walk in straight lines. And I understand parks to be, anywhere in a public area is a lane of travel. It's, it's a mode of getting, there are paths set up for people to walk on, maybe with disabilities or that are more mobile than others. But the whole public area is a place for residents, the public, to move freely. And setting up impediments, for me, there's, there's some classifications that seem reasonable. So this is subjective, you know, play structures, designated areas, infrastructure. Those are kind of the carve-outs for impediments to free travel through parks. When you start populating them with tents and other obstructions that can be movable, that, that you don't know where they are, what if you're traveling through night, that there's an unexpected thing, that creates a hazard for, for the intended use of the parks, which is, that's why I think they're defined as a right-of-way. It's a place of free travel. It's in the same vein as, as all of these other things that are listed, streets, roads, highways, bridges, alleys, sidewalks, trails, paths, and all this. So I don't see these parks as different than that. And I think the code doesn't see them as different. And I'd like to see it preserved.
I welcome the clarification. Thank you. Okay. Brings us to item eight, Business from the City Council, Contract Award for the 99 Emergency Shelter. Mr. Myers.
And we put out our RFP, and we've received one proposal in response. You've been provided a real quick summary of that, as well as a copy of the, the, the proposal that was submitted. Carrie Forward submitted the proposal to run the Highway 99 Emergency Shelter facility and, and provide services there for a total of $200,000, not to exceed $200,000 each year. The first year will be a nine-month year. Their budget estimate is about $153,000. The second year is, the budgeted X number is $204,000, I believe. $1,000. Page here. $204,370. So they're, but they're proposing in their contract that it would be no more than $200,000 in each full year. Would be less in the first year, because it's only nine months. It's for a 40-bed, 40-person-bed, no more than 40 people, facility housed in, in the shelters and operated 24/7.
Can I have three people signed up? Bruce Kelch.
There we go. Bruce Kelch, 78340, Hall, Monroe Road. The council approved the Highway 99 site with a five-to-two vote as the best option moving forward in addressing homelessness situation in the city. As with all council decisions in which there is a split vote, the council should demonstrate unity in implementing the chosen plan and show support for the project. In its proposal, Carrie Forward has addressed concerns council has raised in the past. 24/7 management, an organization, an organization with extensive experience in serving the unhoused, wraparound services, support, and plan to move clients from their present circumstances to stability, skills training, employment, and more permanent housing. Choosing Carrie Forward to be the provider and manager of the Highway 99 shelter is clearly the logical and best next step for the city. Winter is coming. Time is of the essence. Need is great as the weather changes and living conditions for the unhoused become even more challenging. The council spent, the council spent a long time considering its options and outlining what it desires in terms of a managed site. Carrie Forward meets the criteria and should be the agency chosen to manage the Highway 99 site. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna Z.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for the statement that I think Richard Myers actually made about the incident, that I think that was what it was called. So where do I start with this? First, I just want to respond to Bruce Kelch, the demonstrating unity. I'd also thought about that, you know, you don't have a consensus decision-making process. It is a voting process. So it wasn't, there was no consensus. So just because two people decided they didn't like it, they should not necessarily demonstrate unity. That's not how your process actually works. And the other is this idea that there's a crisis again. This is always what it is, crisis, crisis, we must act and do something. Community Strong Cottage Grove actually has brought forth different ideas. We continue to talk about solutions. An example of a community response, which this is not, this is the housing-first response with harm reduction, is there was, one of the unhoused had a broken arm, you know, and not with a fight with any law enforcement or anything, but with a fight with another person, unhoused person. So he had a broken arm, and he was a meth addict, he is a meth addict. And when I saw him with the broken arm, I mean, his complexion was good and everything, it was like, wow. And I just, I realized, he got clean. He was in the hospital, he got clean. A healthy community response would be communication with the community so that we could have supported him, and instead of putting him back into a tent, we could have helped him with transitional housing and maybe gotten him, you know, onto a better situation. So that was pretty sad to see that, as was the next person on outreach team, which a lot of people are talking about having, and how wonderful that is doing, that would be to have, is something that we actually are doing, is an outreach team. Seeing the next gentleman who actually did not have a arm, because he was shooting up and lost it because of abscesses. And yet, that's not enough to keep people off of this, because we don't have a homeless issue, we have a drug problem in this community. It's a drug problem, not a housing issue. Most of these kids out there, these young people out there, have a place they could go to, they have family in this community, you know, which that woman said earlier, send them back where they came from. Well, a lot of them are from here, they went to school here, and people know them. So I would hazard to say that they have places, and we have spoken to them as long as they were clean, but not allowed in those places because of their addiction issues. So I just wanted to, you know, I don't know how the process works. I say, there's a time of protesting this proposal, and I don't know if we're formally protesting. I don't know if it's you guys to protest or us to protest. My biggest concern with this is that it's not a 24/7-staffed site. That is the biggest concern. There's already safety concerns out there, but they're saying they might have remote cameras. Well, where are the people going to be? How are people, if it's three o'clock in the morning, they want to get in there, they can't get in there. The other is that they're not going to accept certain sex offenders or violent people. Well, you know what, where are they going to go? They're going to go back to the parks. So please be aware that just because you have a shelter, number one, doesn't mean you can just ship them off to the shelter. It's up to them, but they're not allowed to be in the parks, unless, of course, that shelter is full. And now we have a lot of people out there, twice as many as we did, I think, a month and a half ago. So if it's full, then they can be in the parks. If they've been kicked out of the shelter, then they can be in the parks, among other reasons. So this is great. There's a lot of buzzwords. My other biggest concern is that it's Carrie Forward. And I'm not surprised. Why is there only one proposal? What happened to St. Vincent's? And where are Carrie Forward? Are they here today? They're not part of our community. None of these guys on here are part of our community. There's, they have no investment in the people here. They're just being paid. And that's where the community approach brings in the people to support people so that they can have a network of people. I'm very concerned, this is a very woke agency. Laurel O'Rourke is on the board. She's also on the board of the 4J School District. And, you know, this is like a whole sheet of comments that she makes, and there's many grievances against her. And this is just an example, you know, birds of a feather flock together, right? So if I'm kind enough to tell you, you're racist, you are either in my way, in my way, or I like you enough to educate you, or white Eugene is not working against systemic racism, you're working for it. And those are some of the more mild comments. She believes everybody is racist and white supremacy. And in this proposal here, which I don't really understand, but I guess I do understand, you're accepting grant money, right? I have 20 seconds. So there's strings attached. So you're asking all about equity. Well, what are you doing for equity? What are you doing for COVID? And these are not issues necessarily that affect our community here. This is all about the strings attached with the grants. So again, I hope we have more time to talk about this. This sounds wonderful. But it's these buzzwords. The last thing I do want to say is that, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, is that Counselor Fleck, you need to recuse yourself. I know that you said there's a potential or an actual, you know, conflict of interest, but that's where the letter of the law, you know, we need to look at what is the right thing to do. And this is your business, and you are invested in this, and you have a community sharing, has a partnership with Carrie Forward. And they were slated to have this the whole time. So I really question this whole process. They were slated. They were walked around, and they chose. They chose it. So thank you.
Venice Mason.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm out of line. I'm hard of hearing, and I cannot hear what people are saying unless they speak closely to the microphone and not speak so fast. I'm not getting any of this. So I just ask for people to. So I just ask for people to speak to the microphone and speak slowly and clearly, not extremely slowly, but just clearly. Thank you.
My name is Venice Mason and I will slow it down. I get very nervous speaking here. I live at 28 South Sixth Street, Old City Hall Building. First of all, I want to commend the council for putting through the homeless shelter that we need. A lot of the issues that we're hearing about this evening are interrelated issues, and I think that we tend to take these personally. Carry It Forward is an organization that is qualified to do the work as we build what we need in the community. I think some of our counselors are a bit out of touch with reality if they think that anybody would just give someone a piece of property. I think that that statement is just blatantly out of touch with reality. Having been homeless, having been a homeless youth, there's no one handing out property. Not everybody owns the things that you do. That just isn't reality. However, I do believe that what we're dealing with here is a systemic issue and a lot of people are taking this personally. We're taking a look at it as poor character. These are interrelated issues. You have mentioned, you know, comorbidity, Counselor Solzby, and it's actually trimorbidity. Has to do with mental health, it has to do with addiction, and it has to do with poverty. I serve on the Harding Food Bank's Black Indigenous and People of Leadership Program. We're looking to address the root causes of hunger. In order to do that, two of the main issues is not just handing out food, but being able to deal with the issues of houselessness and environmental issues. All of the decisions that you have made have been the best decisions that you could make with a huge amount of community input, with a huge amount of public effort, with the joint efforts of everything. And I'd like to also address the comments that are made that say the Counselor Fleck has a conflict of interest. Counselor Fleck, in my experience, has the concentration of interest in this community. He works in these services and has what's called a concentration of interest. He absolutely has more expertise and knowledge in this arena than most people who aren't dealing with houseless people on a daily basis for the last 11 years as director of the Seoul Social Services Agency outside of DHS in this town. So I do not always agree with him by any means. We don't agree politically, philosophically, but I've heard so many times about this conflict of interest. And I would say that it's a concentration of interest and that it's been used wisely. I do believe that we should accept the Carry It Forward proposal for our RFP in order to get our homeless shelter running. I also think that we need to do some public education to handle the tension that's in the city. If you listen to the radio, there's people drumming up interest in taking back our parks because the police can do nothing. The bottom line is, is whether we like it or not, the courts in America have ruled that homeless people have rights, a right to sleep, a right to be, a right to exist, a right to not be kicked out, to not be beaten, to not be shoved under a rug, and to not be treated as second-class citizens despite their many problems. That is the new reality. And the new reality is that people with lived experience are the new leaders. These are environmental refugees. The environment of systems of oppression create poverty, homelessness, addiction, and compound the issues of mental health and poverty and hunger in our communities. I see this shelter as an amazing opportunity and I'd like to thank the council for letting me do a tour of the facility. And I'm very much looking forward to putting in bargains that will help to give the best to those who need it most in our community. Thank you for allowing the shelter to go through and I wholeheartedly hope that Carry It Forward does a better job than we have so far. Thank you.
Comments? Counsel Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know I voted for the 99 site, but I'm having a lot of trouble with paying almost a third of a million dollars over two years. And it's not, there's no, I mean, there needs to be someone there 24/7. I don't like this spot of camera. That bothers me. I was hoping for more of an RFP that was actually going to be, and I went to their program up in New York. I'd like to see a little bit more of them tackling the problem of stuff that people have that are going to be coming in there. I'm just a little bit wary now. When I saw that some of these shifts might be watched by a camera, basically, yeah, unattended. I mean, with that kind of money, are they having a hard time finding people to work? I know a lot of companies are. They can hire me, I'll do it. But that, that's troubling for me. And then I, I really think the other thing that's sort of bothered me the last few days is I think this council needs to work up a policy of what we're going to do with the overflow. I think the council should do that. Because I'm really worried about some of us saying we want to do this and help these people, but then we're going to find people back in the park. And that's very troubling to me. So I think that, I still think there's a lot of work to be done on this. I mean, I do want to help these folks. Really do. I want to give them a chance because not all of them are messed up. So that's what I have anyone I would add to that.
Counselor Fleck.
So I guess, you know, start with the question of ethics. As I mentioned all along, Community Sharing has no intention of applying for this RFP and, and as you can see, we, we did not apply for this RFP. Community Sharing is mentioned as a supporting agency, but we've had no discussions about compensation at all. So basically, we will help with getting food over so that Carry It Forward can take care of that is the only discussions we've had. So there, there is actually no conflict of interest at this point, potential or actual. So, so saying that for the record. I will also express some concern about 24/7 folks on the site. I actually agree with that concern myself. I, I would not want to see shifts with, with a camera. So, so that's a little bit of a concern for me as well. And I guess I'll just kind of stop there and listen to the rest of the council comments.
Mr. Myers.
So I, I want to, I want to address some of that and we also have Chris and Arwin with us in the audience, I believe Arwin's with Chris as well. And they can answer what they meant there with that. We are intending to have the full shifts, but there will be times when people are at lunch or on break or something that are there on the site that will be monitored as well by cameras. So they'll have a backup with assistance there, Chris can address that a little bit more. Carry It Forward has been in the community for a number of years. They have been helping with us, helping us with different parts of addressing. When we had the facility, the community center, Howard, one of their, their outreach people would come through and help us. They help us with the shower facility as well. They have been a part of this community and they continue to be a part. They're not looking at trying to create some big giant metropolis operation corporate thing of helping homelessness. They are wanting to help the individuals and that's what they do. We did walk through the site with a number of other agencies. We've been working with Square One, we've worked with St. Vincent de Paul, but they just decided they have too many things going on. Square One Village is, is working on a new $14 million project, and so I imagine they're just kind of swamped and that's why they didn't respond. St. Vincent de Paul has also been meeting with us and seeing what we're doing and knows what's happening, but they're currently busy with other projects as well. So Carry It Forward was the one that responded, Shelter Care, we didn't hear anything from Shelter Care as a result. This RFP was sent out to every agency, every organization in Lane County that would have been interested or would have any way of dealing with providing these kinds of services throughout the community. It's also important to note, and there was comment made that, oh yeah, we'll just have these tents set up out there. There's no tents on this property. These are going to be pallet shelters. They will have the shower trailer, they'll have showers and restrooms and hygiene. This will be a, a facility that will be taking care of the needs of these people to help them get back on their feet. It is not a place to dump them and stick them away in a tent and create other problems and kind of, somebody hasn't been to look at the site or been by it apparently, if that's what they think it's going to be. So Chris is here and he could be, he could answer any questions regarding the staffing if you have questions on that. It is a two-year agreement to give us the opportunity to see how it goes, see what happens as we work through what's happening with the legislation and the court cases.
Counsel Roberts.
So, I mean, like, my questions are, if, if they're under just camera surveillance and something happens, what is the response time to this? I mean, does, does Carry It Forward have to notify our police department or does our police also have the feed coming into them? I mean, that's what worries me, you know? I mean, we've had instances, I rolled with our police while you were on your conference and witnessed an incident in, in the park that they had to go to along with South, but they handled it very well, I will say, but there was a time before they got there, you know? And I'm just worried about that. And that was the thing that I was hoping and, for this, was that there will be somebody there that can handle this. And that's basically sort of what they told me when I visited their Eugene place. So I, I feel, and then if something does happen under camera and there's nobody there to respond to it, I mean, how does that affect the contract? I mean, I mean, once, if we agree to this, I mean, I don't know. I, I, I feel that for this kind of money and for what we're trying to achieve with helping these people, that there has to be people there 24/7. I'm sorry. That's just my feelings on it. I mean, the program I went to, they never left us.
Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Chris McCallister, the executive director for Carry It Forward. I understand that wording may be a little bit confusing, so let me please explain. We offer remote surveys for all of our camps. We have someone looking at all of our extra camps to help with trades. When someone runs down the street for a few minutes, we tend to have someone able to be supervised immediately for no more than 10 minutes, a divergence from what's kept. People like to use bathroom, or things like that. So many people on a small site, we want to make sure that there's always staff there. This is just the people that we're paying for this. As stated, we have to work within $200,000 for things. We are taking a loss, are taking portions of this, so we wanted to make sure we are complementing, supplementing with some of our support services. Our case managers would be available onsite, they're not anchored into these talks. Some of our other support staff, some of our therapy, some of our drug and alcohol counselors, some of the volunteers, these are not anchored into these talks. And so we are combating through what we ask for for the budget. And we are also working with partnerships such as the local community or gardening and some of the other people that ask to be more. So again, we do plan on having 24/7 people on staff, but sometimes someone needs to step to use the bathroom, they're technically still onsite. Our other camps, we have within 10 minutes response time from anybody here. So if you are on lunch and in the town of Cottage Grove at Carry It Forward, you have enough time to be right back, but we have someone who's responsible. They see something, they call 911. They hit any of the safety nets as stated in our contract. So I'm open for any other questions.
Counselor Solzby.
Thank you, Chris. So when I read your proposal, it said, we do not deny services due to criminal history. That said, we do not take level-three sex offenders or people with violent criminal history. We determine if a person is fit based on behaviors and interests and, and working on a positive goal. So my question is, I believe you can't run background checks. And so how do you know if they're a level-three sex offender or if they have a violent history or what do you consider violent history?
Thank you, Counselor Solzby. There is a state database in regards to sex offenders and whether you are level-one, level-two, or level-three, or currently not classified, we've attempted this massive redo, and there's still people reclassified. But we go by the database. We also go by records. We are able to do criminal background checks if we have the money to do so. We are able to, as it means the most of our contacts, do background checks on our staff or on a client's identity for the program. So there is that capacity.
Am I mistaken to, did I misread that? That it's not, that you, you can't do criminal background checks as part of the, the RFP to turn people away? I thought I read that.
We are not being required to at this point. We are able to do background checks if there was a concern, but it costs us money. And so we cannot do so freely. So there's none of this that we can look up each individual to see where they are with that component, other than sex offenders. Sex offenders, we are protected for our communities to be able to look up on that capacity.
So basically, you're just looking at a sex offender list and you, you take their ID when they come in?
We have to, the state verified through the HMIAS program, which is also federal, meaning that we look up our folks. Anybody who does not have an ID, we have ways to back that up. So if you have a social security number, we can look through, all those things are captured when you are listed as a sex offender.
Emma.
I have two questions. The first question is, how many onsite staff do you have at any given time? Is it one?
We have between one to six, depending on what we're doing during the day and if there are.
Okay. And my second question was, we're talking about HMIAS, do you do front door evaluations?
Yes, we currently do, and that's a great question. Front door assessments, we do. We are one of the people who did the front door assessments here in Cottage Grove throughout East Lane County and Street, over the last year.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Arwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Chris. Let me see again. Will you describe the strategy for managing the shelter's availability for freezing nights? Are you going to keep a vacancy rate in order to have capacity to take in people for, on the freezing nights or how? Is that addressed in the proposal?
Sure. So thank you for that question. We've been asked to do a year-round emergency shelter for the Cottage Grove residents. So in that in mind, our goal is to make sure that people don't need beds on freezing nights if we have availability in ourselves. So with that being said, we also have space inside the building as well as the ability to possibly shelter folks on freezing nights in other spaces, as well as I've committed to the city. And if we are still being supported with our benefit, then we'd be happy to support with staff and volunteers in other trip events or here on the freezing nights. So wanting to work within whatever the Cottage Grove network is, we're not here to redefine new resources, we'll support you as you find your way.
Counsel Stanton.
How, how much space would you say you have in the building in case you needed it in a cold night?
As we have not taken possession of the building and not seen where the construction has finished or, or it is, we looked at the square footage, I don't know how many people were registered in the account. So 22 people last year, two people from Eugene or wherever, 20 from here, 30, 20 of them in the 33 units that we are being holding and be there. We have floor space for several people. There are also a couple of units that we're talking about for a little bit through the room, with people who have mental health or other needs to have more space, be separate from there, so we could possibly turn units there in emergency. We also have a portable unit that we can bring on-site that is co-developed with our own building builder, and we'd be happy to find whatever strategies we can.
Thank you.
Counsel Roberts.
Thank you for being here. I didn't see you hiding in the back there. Once again, I had a good time and you really explained to me up in Eugene. I just wonder if you could explain to a lot of the people in the room and your own council what it's like in a day there, you know, pretty much, and then how, like you explained to me, how the counselors are there, for what reasons, the, the community kitchen, sort of a little bit, a short synopsis of how it works.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The day in life of a Carry It Forward camp usually starts that morning shift at 8:00 a.m. Breakfast team rolls in, sometimes you have someone who wants to cook, other times we just open up the kitchen, make sure the showers are available. Case manager starts to come in, works with a couple of people on their case load, maybe they're following up on a voucher, maybe they're looking at replacing their ID and needing to get the list. We start the laundry van, there's laundry that's going to go out to site, we're going to work on that. People who have had volunteer duties, set up their shifts. Those who can't or are unable to, they're doing their own thing. Sometimes they'll bring a counselor for them, sometimes they are going out to site with a right source, or you're in Cottage Grove with your local, by lane, options. We have the ability for folks to bring in classes through telemedicine and through the computer network, tablets, if you're working on a class for your schooling, we have availability for that. We have for each section, a dedicated hotspot, so you can be able to do some of the things that you need to do. It's not going to be about taxes. So then you go into meals, you can cook for yourself, or we have some people who are qualified for meals and meals, we don't navigate for that. Afternoon team comes in, we have people who want to focus on arts, on doing a work Afternoon team comes in, we have people who want to focus on arts, on doing workshop, maybe do some gardening. We have some vocational people, uh, coming in, wanting to do some skill building. We're, we're working with job specialists with the employment center to help, we're named with teams and help people find local work in their communities. Um, if you need a pair of boots to go work at the mill, we help line you up with that. We have drugs and alcohol support staff to come help people work through their issues. Some people come to our camps to eat cane because we don't let people be actively using our sites. It's about behaviors. The brand counselors come through, people find the different counselors, different styles work for them. We help navigate through that. So we're very case management driven. About evening time, overnight team comes in. They tend to make sure safety, they can hold lockabouts. They are more about documenting, checking what your remote team, what did I see? Who just came in? Is that a bike that we looked at? I noticed a dog. That person doesn't usually have a dog, what's going on? And so, we check in and open the record. Morning comes around, we do the exchange. Who was not able to sleep last night was to whose fault? Is there anything that we need to do? And the day starts again. We have a robust team of people 24/7 to make sure that the needs are addressed. If we need to bring someone in from our other site, someone who has more de-aspliation training, we actually need to transport them that night, but then it's about a half hour turnaround, or it's here. We share our resources with Cottage Grove because we are a network system. We don't just serve one account. I'm a spring builder. My people's needs are not met in Springfield. My people's needs are having to go through your team. I support the hometown feel. You guys know what your people need. We just want to make sure that it's real for you.
Emma.
Um, you said that they have a team of staff. Is that staff that is already hired?
A team staff?
You said you had a team of staff. Is that staff that is already hired and ready to?
Yes.
Okay.
We've been on standby since February.
Okay. Um, can you go over your details quickly about your plan for retention of staff?
Yes, that's great. As we've taken on different camps, we want to make sure that we leave nobody behind. So we only go after models that pair up in the same style that we have, so that we are able to keep our wages the same and be able to add for benefits. As we take on local camps, we have more local services. We started to train and do a little bit of outreach. And so, most of our staff are going to be trained to be community healthcare workers. So that will allow us to build OHP for some of our supports as well as do some of our assessment. With that, that will allow us to save the money and ask for more dollars that we're taking benefits. And so, we're looking at having local benefits. And we pay more than, uh, we're looking at establishing a minimum wage of about $18 to start. And so, we know that things are costly more in low areas. We know a lot of access discourses. It's a lot more expensive going to cities to get more access. So we want to make sure people coming here, or being here, and even looking for more for us here to be able to help. So, more benefits by having more contracts. And then effectively police support, also minimizing cost by utilizing care as another support games across the globe.
Counselor, Counselor Roberts.
Once again, that's great explanations. How hard or easy is it going to be for organizations here in the community of Cottage Grove churches to volunteer and help with this project out on 99? Will they be able to do that? From what I'm understanding, there are people that want to help. And, um, how you'll deal with that? Would be like an orientation or so?
We welcome volunteers who agree, supporting the dignity of everybody involved, keeping the families here for those involved, helping people grow in a way that's conducive to their own personal growth. So in that in mind, after we get our feet on the ground and our understanding what's available for the site, it would be a commitment, training, and opportunities to join us volunteers. So it would be a streamlined process for any of us.
Then you think you reached the goal, right? To the end? Because we've had people over the last, how long have we been discussing this? Seven, eight months, saying that it's a community problem. So, I'd be glad to see some of these organizations that have had good, some good things to say to get, to get involved. I can't thank you enough. I'm really sorry I did not see you. Apologies.
Counselor Solzby.
What is, okay, so, what have, what has been a big issue for me is that there's no requirement at all to get into any kind of drug treatment or alcohol treatment. And that bothers me because I feel like in order to, for them to really be successful in life, they have to break that habit. And I realize that they fall back in and have, you know, go backwards and, and that'll happen. But I am very skeptical of a program that will give you all the benefits without requiring the, um, making you get into something that could really help you get off a substance that's ruining your life. And so, um, how do you go about that?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, thank you, sir. Thank you, that's a very, very deep question. And I'm just going to reiterate that when someone is ready and able to enter treatment, that is transformative. And so, the average person who's fighting and truly fighting this struggle relapses at least seven times before they have a ticket. So being able to be that safe spot for them to be able to continue to keep trying. Now, behaviors are what get people expelled from our camps. Behaviors. So if you are untreated on meds and your behaviors are gone, or if you just had a really bad day at work and you want to go pull off statement, you take it off on my staff, on a community member or a fellow client, then we need you to go take your cool off and go collect your head. And so, if someone is not able to be in the community, then we want to try and find a help and use our support. Maybe that's a conusoga at a, at a crisis spot. Maybe it's checking in with her brothers and sisters down at South Lane. The options are determined by our community and what we're able to do as a community. So we do not force people to go into treatment. We find that when we do, they don't get better. It gets worse, and they are more likely to do the behaviors that are really railed against in our communities. And so, we want to make sure that it's okay to be in recovery, that we give every option and availability to do it. We have medical, we have mental health and substance use professionals both integrated into our staff, integrated into our policies, and integrated into our outlets. And so, if I can't handle something with my team, I don't just step back and go, "I'm out." I try and find the solution because these are all of our people, and it's just a displaced problem. If I move it down the road, it won't follow up. And so, I can't make people get into treatment any more than I can make people take their meds, vote the way I want, or drive on the right side. That said, we do what we can when people are there. And we are motivation and traction based. Our camps are called SPOT, shelters prioritizing onward traction. We want people who are motivated to work and work hard. We will work as hard as our people, but we can't work harder than our people. And so, we have a requirement of case manager. We check in with our case manager at least every couple of weeks, if not every week. If there's goals, because they're waiting on social security, we get you with the next. We get you with the people you need to have help. And so, sometimes it's getting stability that allows sobriety to surge up. You can have a place to deal with the withdrawals and feeling in the darkness and not feel like you're going to be chased out, be made to go at 7:00 in the morning and find out what you're going to do during the day. So being in that safe space, having access to care, having access to a network that will go beyond its own network if we need to. That's what I think is the answer to that.
So, um, I also read in, read in your proposal that it said you had South Lane Mental Health and Laurel Hill pledged interest in assisting with access to mental health services for clients. And I do know the waiting list is months out to get into South Lane Mental Health. And so, I question, do you have other, because you say you have drug experts and, and mental health. You have other people on your team that will be there besides?
So, we, we recently were part of a collaborative grant with $23. There was also $110 that allowed the funding for a team of mental health and substance use counselors to come into any Cary Court camp. So it's dialed money for our projects. And so, they're working in concert with our low barrier but graduated and complete care model. And so, we are working with professionals there. We also have relationships with Laurel Hill because of the fact that we all utilize the same outreach and crisis and triage models. We are as part of the Cottage Grove Irish Triage team. We are some of the teams that come and help solve problems for people who can't get their needs met here to go and get their help at Lane County Behavioral Health or send the forensic investigation team to help get a prescriber so they get on the meds. We have ways and we're utilizing this system. We're tied into the backbone of what the county does off.
But they're not, they're not, um, full employees, you contract it out.
They are services that are already contracted in the council. So we also have, they aren't part of our employees, but we can dispatch them.
Like South Lane Mental Health? So it's others just contracted out?
Well, we do, we do have people who are scheduled to come in. Today, we had one of the counselors come in tonight to speak with people who have specific needs for them. Tomorrow, we have someone coming in during the afternoon. On Saturday, we have a prescriber coming to see if there's anybody who's already on a list that they need to read names.
I'm sorry, forgive me, this is new, I haven't talked with you before. When you say a prescriber coming in, what, what, what do you mean by that?
Okay, so some people have already established care, whether it's alignments or healthcare centers. And if they have access to services, they have teams that run, can go their routes. And so, at one of my camps, I have people who have care already established. They know that they can't go here, so they come and check in. Okay, was that my working? Cool. And then they go and they have them go to their council appointment next week, and they follow up. We have brought medicine to the camps when people can't get out to the medicine and have to stand first, first, third for appointments. Most of my people are disabled, having developmental disability or have other barriers to healthcare other than just having insurance. And new patients, when you get out of hospital, sometimes it's six to eight months, and you know, right? And so, with that, we've got volunteer doctors to come check in on our people. We have other people who have already been vetted by county dollars to be part of the medical response. Does that help?
It does. And, and my other concern is just when someone gets kicked out of the camp, where they go, you said, to, and you don't just push them out?
We don't abandon anybody. We try and give the ability to resolve behaviors before they're asked to leave. If you're violent, if you assault my staff, I'm calling the cops. Yelling at the neighbors, I'm calling the cops. And we cannot get us to mine down within our internal mechanisms. We do not want to be a burden, we want to be a resource to this community. So if someone is behaviorally unsound, we try and get them to mental health. If we, if someone is out of control, we do what any other resident would do, which is utilize all local systems to support it. Now, if someone would be better suited on our other sites, I am not going to have the same job here, this is a Cottage Grove only site. But I have other sites where I do have beds available. I need to have someone chill for a couple of days. We have other partners that we do potentially navigate for the sake of their ability to come back and be part of their community camp. Sometimes we need to check out. Sometimes we need to be right where we are and in there. We can pop people down. These are your people, we want to make sure that they're here first.
One more question. How, how do you qualify somebody as Cottage Grove only? And the reason why I ask this is, is I have seen the population growing. And, um, just talking with people that come into my business and what they tell me. I shared the story the other night that one of my clients lives on Row River Road and homeless, unhoused, will walk down her street. And she, first thing she said to me is, "There's a lot of new transes in town." I go, "Why do you think they're new? What makes you think they're not from here?" And she goes, "I know, because my, I have a dog and my other three neighbors all have dogs, and our dogs go crazy when they walk in front of them." Well, all the people that have been here for years, they know to walk across the street. And she goes, "My dogs are barking day and night right now." And so, I'm concerned of how you're going to identify that they are a citizen of Cottage Grove.
That's fair. One of the people that I just, uh, who recently had to go later rest was boarding Cottage Grove. So sometimes their birth certificate is for letting us know that they're from here. Other types of people have graduated from Cottage Grove, they show us their stuff that hits in our lap. We've also had two, two people in this community doing outreach work for the last two years. We have a fair idea about who the current and main population is. People have inflows, and people are coming out of the woods when it's colder because they need the help. A lot of people go back and have been back for a while, and have been in town for a couple of years. So there's different communities and there's different understandings and there's different needs going on. So we look at what other partners have they been working with? Because we are all tied to the same system. Our priorities, people received county and federal dollars, it'd be for the same now. And so, we see where people are down very close. Also, we work very closely with the community here. We are at the 20 showers, we spend hours meeting, we follow up on people. And so, the main owner, first, we take in everybody who wants to come from, from the community. He said, "I come here to make bed and do my thing." And then we know how many beds are extra. And then we know and try and figure out who can we come in, who said no first. And we talk to the C, if this is really what they think it is, or we can make your bed and make. And so, that's our approach. And so, there will be people who just moved here. There will be people who just bought a house, cannot make payment, are now on your streets. Are they technically from here? Well, they bought a house and now they don't live here. So it's ultimately, the onus is good faith by what we're going to do with the data we have. Um, we have the, uh, home by name list that, uh, social services do operate here, so we have an approximate number of how many people at any given time are here. It was 196 last time I saw. And so, that's up to 188 left here. So yes, there's a small group there from where they come. Some people just got picked out. They come from someone who's, the person was too loud at night, and so, they got picked out. We have to take care of someone who's lost them. There's different reasons why people on the streets, and we don't know what, and you know, on the streets, we just know there's people with, you know.
Emma.
Um, I again have two questions for you. Do you have any programs that focus on getting those who are in your population back out into the community?
Um, so in terms of work or in terms of housing?
Uh, in terms of, uh, work or experience or not alienating them to their one area?
Of course, yes. We want people to be safe as they work out their own trials and tribulations. And then when they're ready to come back and be in the community, if that's their goal, that's where they want to be. We as an organization do not want to be around for, we hope that homelessness and housing come together and that we are obsolete and we'll wreck the book. That said, um, we want to make sure that people are ready to do treatment in camp. When people are adjusting to meds, when people are getting clean, if that's what they are, or people are just embarrassed and lost their house because they couldn't pay their bills, and they're getting back on their feet again, that's for them to do. We want to have opportunities for people on our work teams to go do things around the town, help out community partners, help out community things, do something other than work. We see ways that we can integrate. We see ways that we can, uh, work, but we also don't want to suspend anything on the program. So we'd like to have invitations to be part of stuff, and we'd like to be able to contribute for our local community.
Okay. Um, and then my second question is that I believe that with HMIS, you have access to data about your, about people who leave your program and how long they remain housed. Can you tell me a little bit about those numbers?
Okay, so I cannot currently talk about, like, data across a lot of plans, but there are ways to follow up in environments with a lot of the county contracts and local contracts to follow up on six month and 12 month intervals after someone has been housed or left your shelter. And so, sometimes it's an update, are they still housed? In which case, yes. And then looks up why, and it may be because of behaviors, maybe because of constraints, and maybe because their need was not permanently met. One of the young served meds, augment needs in our communities are, they suddenly discharge veterans. There's a lot of veteran services. They suddenly discharge the less than honorable, they don't meet any of those requirements and don't have any help, even though they're a veteran. So that's an example that we would follow up and we'd still locate persons still in that category. Other times, we have people who've been housed throughout, if the national program continues on and you're able to go, we can verify that they're still in housing and hope with that. I would have to do a report based off of the community at ours to see what Cottage Grove or they are, their situation. But also with our different programs, we have different camps for different reasons. My medical camp is a little bit different than my low barrier Cottage Grove camp. And so, people have a higher likely with to get into other, uh, longer term housing from that.
Okay, so you don't have a, you don't have a data comparison?
I'm not, I'm not at this moment, I can't look up it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Savage.
Thank you so much for coming this evening. I know it's not easy to stand here and be asked a bunch of questions, but I really appreciate that you have the knowledge to be able to answer them, even if you don't have the answers, you're able to say that, and I appreciate that. Um, I basically wanted to commend you for coming down here and being present to answer the questions. I really appreciate all the questions being asked. I think there's not much that I can think of that hasn't already been asked. Thank you for coming.
Counsel Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you'd mentioned in part of the process if someone has to be expelled from the facility, that there was a connection with the Conestoga Huts, and that made me think of the community-supported shelter system up in Eugene, which, um... Do you know much about them? Is that part of your process to pair up with them? Would they be coming down potentially to, to support that? Because we did change a lot of, uh, things to make way for just that kind of thing uh, on some, you know, nonprofit and, and private, uh, properties. Um, and so when you said that, it made me think that that's kind of one of the, one of the things that helps soften the landing when someone has to be expelled. Can you speak to, I guess, the value of, of that in concert with what you do?
Thank you, and, uh, I cannot speak for our community-supported shelters. I can just say that they are an honored ally in the work against homelessness and that we utilize one of their intellectual properties, the Conestoga, um, uh, shelter. And so we have four of our own and they're often used by local communities as their answer, just like pilot structures. And so I would certainly love to partner more with CSS, we haven't passed. Um, but I cannot speak to a direct recent re-engagement. They've been working on their camps, we are, we share close proximity to our camps. And so, but, uh, we'd be happy if they have already established something here to follow up and support what they have here. In regards to the safe space or outside of network transfers, we have found that sometimes, well, most times, not every could be better, fits for everybody. Um, the same approach doesn't help if you're in recovery, putting you in an open low barrier camp, where there's a not, uh, um, prohibition on drugs would not help someone with recovery. Being able to say, we have the ability to put you here and have you be taken care of in a way that you need. We need trauma support, we need drug counseling, whatever the need, we have a safe space for you, whether it's owned by us and somewhere else, or whether it's hosted by somebody else or the different side. Same reason why we might use Hourglass in Eugene for hours to calm down, talk to a professional, and get aligned with your mental health care. So we have found what we call the chill out thing. We've talked with Spirit One Villages about it. That's one of the reasons why we made our original prototype for our wooden shelter that we make ourselves with our vocational program. Um, we needed a spot that was safe where someone wouldn't be able to harm themselves as best they could, also having privacy, um, in their unit, and be able to be in a close survivable spot to be able to make sure that you're safe and do checkups. And so we now have that in our own, uh, catalog and we station those around. We encourage any place that does shelter, any place that does, uh, high tension support, to have a chill out space, whether it's in the same building or offsite. And so that's one of the things we would love to cultivate, whether it's a church and have a Conestoga or another unit there to be able to do that. That's ways that we can find ways to help work the community. Are you, I'm sorry?
Yeah, and a follow, follow up to that, uh, is the, the structures themselves. If there is damage to the structures, is that at the city's expense for repairs? And if you could speak to maybe rates of maintenance costs beyond normal wear and tear in your existing sites?
That's fair. Um, I think that, uh, we as the vendor utilize the equipment that you currently have as it is. And so we understand some of these units have already been used for, uh, the warming center, and we are willing to enable to, within a little bit of our budget, so replace things like locks or things like that. Um, sometimes depending on the damage, we have to ensure, as is the city with some of the properties. But I'd really yield to, uh, Richard on the liability portions because I haven't seen a contract.
Counselor Salisbury?
Do you want Richard to answer first, or?
Go ahead.
Um, I, something that's been pretty important to me and that no one can really seem to give me an answer on. And, and, um, you were just asked by our youngest member, um, what the success rate is for people coming out. And, um, I really having a hard time wrapping my head around a low barrier shelter that the drug treatment just is not number one priority or kind of insisted on. And, and so, um, but you don't, I, I would think that that would be part of your proposal, actually, is that you would have those numbers to tell us because that speaks the highest volume of any business that is conducted, is what is, what is your success rate?
And I appreciate that question and the challenge. Um, different models have different success rates. And so the lowest barriers, and I'm proud of our success rate with our, and, and shelters that we closed in July because of the ending of COVID dollars. We had an eighty-five percent success rate for that shelter. But that's where we had dial supports, that's where we had a hundred thousand dollars piece management and other supports. That's where we had community access to professionals, we'd come in and reach people. We'd be bringing professionals, we had a building that was a lockdown facility. We had county referrals that had all these extra, um, supports. And so if we had someone who was not able to work in our network, we had an immediate, uh, provider, provided transfer over. So we'd maintain their success. So the availability for vouchers, this is the first year that I have ever seen in my eighteen years of all of these things, but we have more vouchers than we have available units in our entire town. There are people fighting over the same things and people with income versus people with voucher, people without lose everything. Unless it's already built in some of these big, low barrier, low income shelters.
See, that, that statement right there is alarming to me, is that you, the, the population is growing and you have these great successes, and yet when the COVID money runs out, you close down. And so that is scary to me, investing in something like this. And once our COVID money's gone, how are we going to pay for it? And that is the big part of the RFP that went out, is that it's going to be largely up to you guys to go after that funding. And you just closed the camp that had eighty-five percent success rate. So that is a concern.
And it's a valid concern. We closed a shelter that was open only under the county's request for a limited term contract. They closed down two hotels, our shelter, and two other shelters for those monies because it was only meant to be during the closures for COVID. And so this is a community shelter. This is a long-term shelter. This is a shelter that's meant to keep people permanently out of homelessness and, and high growth. Y'all are building the houses, y'all are building the, uh, services, you're bringing in the healthcare providers. You guys are already a step ahead of my town. And so I have, I'm down here asking to help y'all because y'all are opening doors for people or other communities that are not. And so I believe in the success rate of people who are willing to try, and this is the community's part. And so I can't ask my people to try harder, they're already saying that we're going to do this for less than what we charge the other cities to do. Where we're saying we're going to give you the same amount of services that we give everybody else, or we're going to do so because we're committed to making better Cottage Grove grow. And so entirely bearing to people without services, so we wanted to bring services to you.
Or the other side of that coin is they're a little bit ahead of us and seeing that it didn't work. So that's, that's where I agree with that, and so I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, I wanted to clarify to you, to me and to Salisbury here. Um, when you say that, you mean that the grant that you got for that shelter was a limited grant?
Yes.
So you were not actively seeking out more, more funding for that grant?
Not for that grant because it was going to be transitioned to another site that the county does own. And so they were not interested in our building, using locks.
Okay.
Counselor Flood?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council award the Highway Ninety-Nine Emergency Shelter Operations and Services, uh, Personnel Services Agreement to carry it forward in the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars a fiscal year and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. An all associated document subject to expiration of the protest period or resolution of any timely filed protest.
Got a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
The motion with a second, sir, more discussion?
I have one motion that I'd like to share. This has been a little touchy thing for a lot of us, this issue of the unis, the homeless. Um, this is, this problem is not the council's fault, it's not the city's fault. You need to look at the hand of cards that we were dealt basically by the state of Oregon, the county of land, as far as I'm concerned, the Ninth District Court, COVID, and of course, the current economy. It's really hard to play any winning hand with those cards. And I feel that this is the best play we can make. We can't leave these people in the park. I don't know if you've noticed on the news, but, uh, the city of Eugene is going to be paying eight hundred and ten thousand dollars to clean up Washington Jefferson Park. You know, we leave these people in, in the park for extra time. I mean, what, what I'm trying to say is we're going to be paying for this, one way or another. And it's just the way the current country is. We can't bust these people out. Because some of the things that I've heard and seen on Facebook, it, this is just the reality of the United States of America, what's happening. And I really, I mean, I'm a little bit inside, got my heartstrings going. I feel the best thing we have going for us at this time is to sign a contract with these folks. So that, that's just what I want to say.
Counsel Irvin?
I want to acknowledge that I see, um, really pure intent in, in the execution of what you do. And I appreciate that. I'm not in support of the, of the RFP for reasons that have nothing to do with you or what you do, uh, for the folks that you do. In this case, for me, the ends do not justify the means, um, of getting there. Uh, I, I think this is, I think this is fraught with more peril than it needs to be. I think there are other ways to go about it that are slower, admittedly, but, um, just, I want to thank you again for coming.
Counsel Salisbury?
Chris, I, I wanted to say thank you for coming and presenting this, you did very good, Tom.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. All those in favor, six, five, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item B is intergovernmental agreement between the city of Cottage Grove and Drain. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. On, uh, August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, Eric Mongan, the city planner, and myself, um, met with Jenny Stevens, she's the Drain city administrator, to discuss the potential of providing planning services to Drain. They currently have a contract with a third party to provide planning services. City Administrator Stevens, uh, reviewed the current planning provider service and has decided to look for their provider. She was recommended to contact the city Cottage Grove as we provide other contracted services to other cities, such as our building services to Presswell, uh, Benita, and Gilbert. And we also provide building services to Presswell. I want to, uh, reiterate that this is just planning services, it's not building services. They re, I believe, receive building services from, from Douglas County. So after reviewing Drain's past workload, types of planning applications, and current ball, code, the city planner, planning staff believe that they could provide the needed planning services to the city of Drain and not impact Cottage Grove's planning responsibilities and timely response to our city applications. And analyzing it, they believe that about five hours per week is, um, the amount of service, potentially over a year that would be provided. And the contract that's being proposed is based off that five hours per week and, um, an aggregate amount of time between the assistant city planner and the planner, city planner, which came up with fifteen thousand dollars per year, uh, being proposed in the IGA agreement. Our, our legal counsel has prepared the IGA, the planning services. Um, if the city council approves this this evening, then Drain will be considering it at their October tenth, um, meeting. The services that we provide will be compensated on a quarterly payment based in the section three of the IGA. The staff's recommendation is to approve the IGA between the city of Cottage Grove and Drain and direct the city manager to sign the IGA. Any questions?
Question, Counsel Salisbury?
Thank you. What if it goes over the, the hours estimated? We probably already covered that.
Yeah, so each year, just as we have the same contract in other services, uh, we do an addendum each year. So if we find out that we're providing more services to Drain, we would sit down and do an addendum um, at the end of June for the next fiscal year, and in July, so that we would, um, we would propose that the rates would be increased, or in some cases, maybe they would be decreased. Um, you know, Drain has, um, their planning commissions only met once in the last two years. Um, their planning applications, I think, they've got one new house in two years. So some of the work that's been proposed in, in the beginning is to bring their current development code up, um, and use the model state code. So our staff would work with that to, to kind of bring them into today's role in regards to developments and code, and then from there, um, provide their services.
Counsel Flood? Thank you, raise your hand.
I did. Mr. Mayor, I move that the, uh, council approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Cottage Grove and Drain and direct the city manager to sign the agreement.
Second. Got a motion with a second, is there any discussion? Counsel Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just feel it necessary to say I graduated from not Drain High, but North Douglas High. Um, yeah, so it's, not many of us out there. Um, so what you said, um, I do, and I, I have confidence that you'll be keeping an eye on this. When I hear that, you know, five hours is not going to impact us at any time, I think of staff, um, time and go, well, what are they doing with that time? Um, that there is no impact. Um, of course, I would, you know, like to leverage every hour of my employees' time, um, for a profit. Uh, that being said, I would, I would just, I trust that if, if it is taking, cutting into our primary, um, mission here, uh, that, that that will be addressed. Um, so I just wanted to, just qualify that.
Okay. Um, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor, six, five, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, concerns of council? Counsel Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I know we're not to comment on the incident on Chevins Street, but I was wondering if maybe in future meetings, we can discuss, uh, police body cams again. I know we did it in the past, and from what I understand, the technology and cost has come down majorly in the last two years. So I'd like to see the, uh, staff, uh, look into that for the future. I think that that protects everybody involved, the city, the citizen, and the police. Um, got a problem we're having with the shopping carts one again. I know we, uh, went through all this as a council. Um, I got a nice, uh, letter from the folks, the Sowas over at Grocery Outlet. They found a majority of their carts have been missing and were behind Walmart of all places. And a lot of them were so damaged, they can't be used. So for a small independent store, not a chain, I feel for these folks because a couple of those carts are well over three hundred pieces, they had eleven of them that were destroyed. So I'm wondering, um, I know with the city, we've been busy, we've been low on police, lots of stuff going on, but, uh, there's, you know, Tom Monroe used to say, you know, what good is the code book if we don't enforce it? Um, I'd like to see, uh, the police out there double checking on, seeing if people are bringing carts off of the, uh, appropriate bodies. Whether it's something that we pass, I'd like to see that, uh, that go. Um, want a, uh, commendation to Fay Store and the work and the people he hired to fix the street over where the trees were. I tell you, the sidewalk that they put in there is, it's wonderful, absolutely great, and the great work over there. Um, and the BMX track, people had a great car wash over at West Swat, wanted that swat through the water, that was great. Oh, I have another question for Fay. Um, Benny Hubbell Park on the Ninety-Nine thing, I noticed there are paint marks. Is that going to affect the, the monolith that's there with the new sidewalks or still room? the, the monolith that's there with the new sidewalks, are still room there?
Counsel Roberts, I don't believe so. That was the utilities were marked because Sutulai that is doing the work for the ODOT upgrades is going to install a storm manhole in the center of that intersection and then go towards the river with their detention facility. It's not intended to be across there. I don't believe it. I think it's just the parameters that were laid out when they asked the utilities to come.
I was just wondering if it was going to be that closer to the road, you know? I know they're widening and all that. Thank you for that answer, appreciate that very much. Two more things, this Friday night, my mural committee will be unveiling our second mural on the wall of the mine during art walk at 6:30. Also, some news on the mural committee, we have our own 501(c)(3), and looking forward to that. We have four murals scheduled for next year. Funding is pretty much prepared for that, so I'm really proud of my group, what they've done. And definitely, last but not least, BMV, their final awards party and thanking party. And one thing we have forgotten to do, is the Bohemia City Marshal. We had an official Bohemia Deputy Dog this year, and me and the deputy dog were going around the park, and we raised money for the kennel, and finally want to get this check to our police department. So I'd like our interim chief to step forward, here is $200 to help keep our kennel going from Deputy Dog, from the Bohemia. Yeah, there you go there. That's really good. And I also have in the back of my station wagon about 60 pounds of kibble for you. So, and that's all I have. Once again, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Counsel Savage?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk about two different instances that happened over the last week that humanized the folks that we live around. I had the ability to walk into the tent city that we have in Trailhead Park the other day. I was looking for a woman who had left some belongings at a location where I was able to gain her belongings. I learned that she was staying back behind the old Hard Knocks, and I went looking for her so I can give her her belongings back. And there was a nice young gentleman that I approached, and he was so kind and so welcoming, was very clear that I had no idea what I was doing. And he says, how can I help you? He said, well, I'm looking for a young woman, I need to give her things back. And he says, you know, I think I know who you're talking about, and she's right over She was angry and she was yelling. And when I gave her her things back, she cried. Her things, her belongings, when you have so very little to receive them back, it, it made her feel valued in a way that you could immediately see her demeanor change. And although there are issues there, I want to humanize her because she immediately calmed down and was able to have a conversation. And when I got back to my car, this young man came up to me and he says, did you find her okay? Was that her? I said, yes, it was, thank you. And he says, I'm glad that I was able to help you find her. I was actually kicked out of this park the other night. So despite his own behaviors, he was also kind and understanding, and I want to humanize him. A few days ago, we had another incident where somebody, and I don't know who this person was, but they were obviously in distress, came walking onto a piece of property that I manage, and the police were called. And they were so kind and compassionate with this young man who was so clearly in distress. The incident was, was quick, it was over and done with before I knew, but the officers were incredibly understanding and compassionate and willing to talk with this young man. And to witness that made me go, it's gonna be okay. So I know we have a lot of instances going on here, but let's, let's look at a bigger picture, and when we see good, let's call that out too. So, thank you.
Counsel Stenett?
Mr. Mayor, just a little bit of clarification, the prepared statement you read earlier, was that meant to be on behalf of the entire council, or was that yours?
That's mine.
Okay, thank you.
But with that, if anybody, if this council wants to do one for support of the strike, I've been employed out there since February of 89, so this February will be 34 years. I've been working there, paying dues there, and I've been standing on the picket lines there. And I planned on retiring in February, so it might be an early retirement for me, but half that plant site has less than six years seniority. So it's all young people. When I'm standing on the picket line talking to the TV, there's a half a dozen people next to me that are 40 and under. And so, you know, they're my kids' age working out there, they've got a future. I am, I'm not striking for me, I'm striking for them. We're 200 people of 1,100 on strike, this is the whole West Coast, and it is, and it's not local. So if you know any supervisors out there, don't give them a hard time because they are doing everything they can, they want to go back to work. It's Seattle, there's our, our problem. So if this council wants to do that, I've got a lot of time, so we can draft something up, do it as a, as a body. Counsel Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd love to learn more about everything that's going on there, but if it's in keeping up behalf of the support. I think I heard a couple of things that, from Concerns of Council right now, that I've been feeling myself, and I had written down across the scenes maybe a little bit differently. I want to, I would really like a presentation from our police on statistics over the last, hopefully maybe 10 years, just to highlight a cherry number, about, that would give a picture of what is transpiring here in Cottage Grove. Hear a lot about, oh, we've always had this kind of problem, this has always been this, like to just see and have us all being formed together on what, what is going on, what violations have been going on, what have been the frequencies, what trends do we see, where are violent crimes, where are theft property crimes? And have that be somewhat of a regular presentation to us. You know, especially in light of everything that's been going on. I get the sense that things are escalating, but I want to check myself and say, is that true? Is it just because I'm seeing more, if I pay attention more? So that would be my request. My concern is that if there's agreement, it doesn't happen without something formal. So I don't know if it needs to be a motion. So I would entertain, I would say, I would move that the council direct city staff, I believe the proper channel is the city manager, to, to present crime statistics in the city of Cottage Grove and surrounding areas of, local to Cottage Grove for the past 10 years, and do that on a reasonably frequent basis going forward.
Second.
We have a motion with a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Counsel Roberts, that was on the consent side. So you didn't miss it, it was on the counter.
Okay, so if there's no more concerns, report to the city manager. You're muted still?
Yeah, there we go. One report I do want to tell you is the interim chief, Chief Growth, is working on body cams. He has been investigating opportunities there and funding sources and opportunities for us to be able to move forward with that, as, as well as a number of other items that we can present and provide as we, we talk about the report on what's, what's happening in the police department. We have had two churches volunteer and participate in helping with the shelter site on at 99. This weekend, we had one church group who spent probably about four hours in the morning on Saturday making curtains and constructing three picnic tables that they purchased and donated for the facility there. We have another church that is, has put about the same amount of money and time involved, they're going to be paying for materials, wood and mulch and things to create garden boxes on the site. And so there are plenty of opportunities, and we're taking those opportunities and moving forward and giving, giving people the opportunity to help. We do know that we are looking for some funding and assistance with acquiring some washing machine, washer and dryer setup. We're looking to try to get two stacked units. We have a laundry room on, in the building, and we have a current old set of washer and dryer, but we'd love to try to get two sets there, and, and it's plumbed and ready for two stacks. So that would be something that would be very beneficial to the residents there. And so we'll have plenty of those opportunities, keep an eye on the response network, the responders network, that Teresa and Jessica have been strong in putting together in the community and being a part of. We'll keep posting some things that we need at the site and opportunities for people to volunteer and participate there. We've also been in discussion with Beds for Freezing Nights regarding the coordination and how to activate beds for freezing nights during the winter as we move into their season in conjunction and coordination with the shelter and other opportunities that are there. How, how do we know if there's room there? Can they operate still and do their facilities in churches? One of the churches has volunteered and said, hey, we're ready and willing to, to have it on our facility, and so they're looking to see if they have volunteers and pulling that together as well. I'm slowly getting better here, I think I'll, I'm probably going to be back in tomorrow, we'll see how the test runs tonight. And, but it's an interesting experience to go to a foreign place, not foreign, but another place for a conference, and then, then end up being sick and not being able to participate in that as much as I wanted to. But it's, I'm, I'm getting, getting better and appreciate that. That's all I have.
Okay, city attorney?
Oops. Hi, good evening. Trying to turn the camera on, there we go. Yeah, thanks. So I just wanted to do a really quick reminder, I've advised city staff that sign code regulations that are not content neutral but are content-based are, should not be enforced within your city. So acting on my advice, various portions of the sign code are currently not being enforced, those that are content neutral, i.e. that pertain to size, placement, et cetera, that you don't need to read the sign in order to determine whether they apply, continue to be enforced in your city. Those that require the sign to be read, read in order to know whether restrictions apply are not being enforced. That is really the only thing I think appropriate to this time, this, this period of time on your calendar that's relevant to hear from me, but I'm available for any questions.
Counsel Irvin?
Yeah, I guess I have, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a question, does that include speed limits?
No, speed limits are absolutely being enforced. I, let me be a little more precise. So anything that is a political sign, so you have to read it to know that it is, that it deals with matters that are political, that are upcoming on the election, that's why I was talking about the timeliness of my little report, just so folks understand what the city can and can't do in this campaign environment.
Counsel Salisbury?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm confused, Carrie, what, what are you saying? So signs with, are, what signs are, you're speaking campaign signs, and what exactly do you mean?
Yeah, so the city has restrictions that apply to political signs, and I have advised, in order to know whether those restrictions apply, you need to read the signs. So any sign that you have to read that categorizes, and there are several examples in your sign code. I've advised staff on what those are, I'm not remembering them right off the top of my head, but I, we've drafted a replacement sign code for the city, and so staff is working on bringing that up through the amendment process based on city priorities. But that's, that's the, the bottom line, Counsel Salisbury, is that political sign restrictions are not being enforced within the city of Cottage Grove, because in order to apply those, you need to read to determine, you need to read the sign to determine whether the restrictions apply.
Are you amending the code to make it to where political sign restrictions will be enforced, or where they will not be enforced?
Well, if, you can't use the terminology "political signs" under state and federal constitutional law. So the First Amendment grants a right to free speech, and you can restrict content, you can impose content neutral regulations. So all sign codes are moving towards that. The League of Oregon Cities has a model sign code that's available online, and if you look at it, you can see that it talks about event signs or temporary signs that you come in and obtain a permit, they can be up for 30 days before and after an event, but that doesn't identify whether that's a real estate, you know, property sale, or a garage sale, or a campaign, if that makes a little bit more sense.
Mr. Mongan?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So what Carrie's referencing in our code, there's a couple of very date-specific provisions, such as September, you're not allowed to put up a political sign or a, an initiative sign more than, I think it's 60 days before the election. There's also quantity provisions in like residential zones and things like that, that can be a little bit more problematic because you have to look at the sign to see whether or not it had, you know, you have to read it to then make a determination. So what she's saying is that we can't read the sign. We can enforce things like sign permits, if you're attaching a four-by-eight sheet of plywood that's, you know, got political content on it, we could say, get a, a building permit, but we can't look at the content of it, or what time of year it's being hung, or anything like that. It just has to meet the same criterion as Victor Riccos, or something like that. And so Carrie and I have talked about our sign code for some time, and Faye and I as well, with the plan of asking council to establish a committee to really understand what the city of Cottage Grove wants to have for their sign code as a way to make sure that we're capturing, you know, how we support our businesses, but also how we let folks speak in our residential neighborhoods as well. For example, in the city of Eugene, their regulation is, is compliant, I believe, with state law, but it says no more than 36 square feet of signage. It does require that it all be, I believe, one unit, so that wouldn't be the six-yard signs totaling that number. So things like that. Our code is either silent or outright in conflict. And so as the person who approves those and regulates, that's where we're at. We don't, we don't look at the content. If your preferred candidate lost four years ago, we're still not looking at the content.
And so just to conclude, the point of my report is both to give you a little bit of explanation, I know that there's been some questions about why various restrictions haven't been being enforced, so I wanted to explain that, but also to provide a heads up on what you'll be seeing coming down the pike and why, why we'll be doing sign code amendments.
Good.
That's all. Thanks.
All right, thank you. So there's no items removed from consent?
Were adjourned.